Mr. Jones?
Yes, I'm here. Hello?
You hear us? Okay.
Can you hear us Reverend Jones?
I can, very clearly. Yeah.
That's good. We can hear you very clearly Reverend Jones.
Okay.
If there's something that you might want to say, there's some background noise if it's something you don't want to hear.
Okay.
It's not from me either.
Hello, everybody.
Good afternoon to you.
Hey, Mr. Jones.
Reverend Jones, I think you need to state your location.
Okay, my location is Charlottesville, Virginia.
Reverend Jones, the county attorney says you have to state your actual address of the location of where you are currently listening and participating in this meeting.
Okay, hold on a minute. Did it go to your address of Benetton? What is it? What is the number? What is the number of the house? Okay, I'm in my car right now, so... And that's my address. I don't know how to go on the phone. It's a Benetton move, and I'll have to give you the numbers later.
Okay, we can update the minutes once we get your address. So for the record, right there, you're located in Charlottesville, Virginia, and then if you could just provide us a physical address, we'll insert it into the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for that.
I'm sorry.
All right, if I call the Hines County Board of Supervisors workshop meeting to order, welcome everyone that's in attendance and happy to see all the faces now. At this time, we'll have our pledge of allegiance immediately followed by the invocation by Mr. Haynes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just thank you again for bringing the meat and to do the business of the county. We ask that you guys in this endeavor and that you will make the right decisions for the majority. We ask you to bless our EMS and chairs department, our fire department, all the county employees that help keep this county working and running as well, and find you good. Thank you Father for all you do for each and every one of us, giving aid to those that are sick and bringing healing to them when we ask for Christ.
Okay, Mrs. Adams.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Would you like for us to go ahead and address the agenda and make any revisions and adoption at this time?
That says on the next page. Well, we'll do it then. Is there any items to be added to the agenda by the one? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as is?
The chairman of the board is approving the agenda as is.
Is that second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Okay, the first item on the agenda, we've got a budget work session, and I think most of this time will be allotted to look at the valuation and the tax rates for vehicles. As most of you know, the market has doubled and tripled some of those values, and the commissioner of revenue came last month and spoke to the board about some options that you could consider, and she would like for us to make a decision tonight as to how you would like to proceed on taxing those vehicles. I prepared a few documents for you if you want to look at the handout, and it's called Proposed Challenges. And these are some of the known increases that we will have in the upcoming budget, FY23 budget. And we've tried to fine tune those numbers as much as possible. So we've included the VRS rate, which is, these items are somewhat out of our control. Well, I guess they are out of our control. So I wanted you to know where we are in our budgeting process. So you've got an increase in your VRS rate. I sent that presentation. I'm not sure. Ace, did you receive that?
Oh, yes, I did.
Okay. And we'll display it as we go through these slides. We've had an increase in VRS rate. We've had an increase in the insurance, which is our health dental vision, a combined insurance. Page six, Ace, if you don't mind. Okay, our proposed challenges. We've had the disability rate, workers' comp went up $10,000. We allowed for fuel increase in all the departments, and that was approximately $70,000. During some of our budget work sessions, it was identified that some of the contractual prices would be increasing, so we tried to include all of those. That's $14,150. Membership and dues, that was identified at our department work sessions, so we included that. Also, the county school debt payments increased. That was $200,125. And that's on the back of the front sheet that I passed out to you. Some other department request is approximately $40,000. We have not addressed those yet. Those will be discussed at the work session on the 5th, of which you want to include, which you don't want to include or want to include. At this point, we've not added any salary increases. We've not addressed that with, of course, the benefits that's associated with salary increases. The social services increase, the local, is $5,570. And Ace, could you go to the next slide, please? The school request, the local obligation is $623,168. We have a regional jail increase of $11,402. The outside agency request, we've not addressed all of those yet, so that will be discussed by the board to determine which of those that you want to fund at the April 5th meeting. And then the incentive grant increase of $80,000, and that's the incentive grant. That's like a reimbursement real estate grant to Central Virginia Electric for the expansion of the broadband services, and that's for new infrastructure. And the board agreed to rebate those taxes for five years, so that's that amount. So in total, we're looking at $1,225,591, and those are the default increases that's going to be in the budget, and that's not any of the requests that we'll be discussing at a later date. So if you want to look at the personal property tax rate, that kind of, go back one slide, please, Ace. That gives you an idea of where Appomattox is in comparison to other jurisdictions. And so the rate that we're currently at is $3.35 per hundred. We're close to the bottom. The lower rate of all the local jurisdictions, but that kind of gives you an idea of where we are and what we'll be talking about this evening. Okay, the next page we're going to is called Rate Reduction on the Vehicles. Okay, so this value, $203,560,000, is the value that Mrs. Henderson had provided to us on what the vehicles... Do you want to address that, Mrs. Henderson? Is vehicles, motorcycles, large trucks?
It's anything that's vehicles. It is... Can y'all hear me okay? It's going to be... Is that better? Okay, so it's vehicles, motorcycles, larger trucks. Sorry. Anything vehicles. Vehicles, motorcycles, the larger trucks. It does not include campers, boats, trailers, that kind of stuff.
And the one-ton with truck tags, two-ton, and road tractors, right?
Yeah, that's all included in that $203,560,000.
So based on 100%, that's 100% valuation of those vehicles, the current tax collection would be $6,819,260. And that's if it's taxed at $3.35 per hundred, if you do nothing. Also, she gave us another value of the boats, the campers, and that was the $22,900,000, which is $757,150 tax collections.
That includes the secret computer equipment. Everything except...
So the rates that you're looking at under that, if you were to reduce taxes by 10 cent to $3.25, the next column would show collections, the last column shows the difference. So that would be a reduction in our revenue. And that goes down the list, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and 35 cent reductions. And if you reduced it to $3, which would be a 35 cent reduction, you would collect $6,106,800, plus $757,150 in personal property taxes. So that's where our big jump is, is in the vehicles. And she separated it this year because there was such a difference. And if you opted, say, using that one as a scenario, because you can go even lower if you want to, one cent of personal property tax is worth $22,646, I believe. I'll have it written down somewhere. So with that being said, we'll look at the next slide. Go back one pace, please. Okay. Go forward. Go forward again. No? Okay, well, you have the handout. It's called the Sample Comparison of Tax Rate Reduction. Okay. It was somewhere in there. Okay, so the 2021 tax, and this is a random selection of vehicles that Mrs. Henderson had presented last month. I pulled those same values and I applied a tax reduction to those. So if you look at the 2021 tax column, that's what they paid last year. If you choose to reduce taxes, I've got the payment in every one of those columns, what they would be paying based on that reduction. And then if you choose to do nothing, then you could look at the current tax rate of $3.35, and you'll see how much of an increase that is to the taxpayers' bill. And all of these are 100% value. I guess at this point, I should ask you, do you want to consider the reducing the value, like was presented last month, or would you rather look at a tax rate reduction? Which I think probably has more advantages now that the General Assembly has taken their action, which Ms. Henderson sent out an email on Friday that the General Assembly had voted that they would allow us to classify the vehicles separately, whereas you can apply a separate tax rate to that classification of vehicles. Are there questions? You're still absorbing? Okay.
Mrs. Adams, I've been going over this in my mind, doing a little math. And I would say this, that due to the state of the economy, the gas prices high as they are, food as it is, and other amenities, look like it continues to grow. I don't see, or her, of any reduction that's going to be forthcoming. So therefore, that equates to citizens getting hurt by this. And I think the county needs to do what it can without jeopardizing any services that we currently have, currently have. And in saying that, I think that we can reduce our tax rate to $3. That's what I'm going to propose. Floor is open for discussion.
So how much did we collect in personal property taxes last year? What was our revenue?
Let's see. All right, Ace. Well, we've got different numbers because, remember, the commissioner of revenue, she gives you values based on calendar year. When we give you numbers, it's based on our budget year. So I can tell you, you mean in '21?
I guess last question, Miss.
Okay.
Twenty-two, but we're not...
All right, and you want to, now, remember, the personal property was not separated. So that included that additional boats, campers, everything into one lump sum.
I'm just trying to prepare revenue numbers right now.
Okay. I thought I had a sheet with that on it, and I know I do somewhere. Because what I have on my budget sheet is actually what was budgeted and not was actually collected. Did you bring, did you have one of those?
I have the...
Actually, yeah. Go up, go up. Go to the next question and come back to that one.
So I was thinking in Ms. Henderson's presentation last month, we took in, if I'm reading this right, $4.8 million in personal property tax?
That would have been...
For fiscal year '21, I guess.
That would have been calendar year.
So how would that equate? So we would still even lower the rate to $3. There'd still be an increase. I'm looking at these samples, and it looks like everybody, most everybody's taxes, even lowering the rate to $3, still go up some. It's just not going to go up 40 percent.
Wasn't it $5.5 million was going to be that total number of increase over last year?
Is this what you were looking at, the tax?
On her presentation.
He can pop that in if that's what you want to look at.
Yeah, I don't think I'm looking at it right now.
The '21 total tax for a billion, so you have what you're looking at?
Yes, ma'am.
And ours was a little higher because we did it over, remember, the fiscal year.
So what, one of the recommendations last time was using a ratio assessment, 75 percent, which we're still going to bring in around 5.1 million. Is that my tracking on that?
Yeah, and that's the vehicles only.
That's, and that's just doing a ratio on the vehicles only?
Yes.
The other ones are assessed at a ratio anyway?
I'm sorry.
The boats and campers and stuff assessed on a ratio anyway?
They're on percentage of cost or either a certain type of appreciation.
So I'm just trying to get my head around, okay, which way helps the citizen the most, doesn't cut our own further. It looks like either way, we would, revenue would be up some. Am I reading that right?
Okay, I found, I scrambled, I found my paper. So last year FY22, it was $4.994,499,4,500. Now, remember, this is using that 203,560 valuation vehicles only. It doesn't include the others. For FY23, if you do nothing, it would be $6,819,260.
Okay, you lost on the first part. What was that first part?
$4,994,500.
$4.9 million?
Close to, yeah, close to five.
That's if we do what?
That was last year.
That was last year?
Fiscal year.
Okay. So we just need to make sure we don't call below that number. What I concern is, we just expressed $1.2 million increase just by default. Just the cost of doing business has gone up.
Now, Mr. Chairman, if I read this chart right, if we reduce it to $3, as you suggested, that'll bring us in $6.1 million, which is still, you know, almost two, well, a million... Million and a half at least over last year.
Yes, sir.
What we did, we ran a rough revenue and expenditure budget in trying to balance. And if you did nothing, you would be looking at about $1.4 million difference between our revenue and expenses. All right, with that being said, let me tell you what that means. That means we have plugged in everything into the expense budget that are those known increases. That does not include any salary increases, and we've not received the numbers from the state, so that's going to change it maybe $100,000 or so of what the comp board will reimburse us and what we pay out. So if you reduced it, that's $700,000 from the $1.4, then that would leave us about $700,000 to work in these other requests and salaries and compression raises and everything. That would be the difference between our revenue and expenditure budget. Does that make sense, Dr. Anderson?
$700,000 to the good.
To the good.
Okay.
Yes. When we were looking at it last week and the reduction on the values and everything, we had a lot of sleepless nights because those money trees were not maturing quick enough. But now this has kind of changed that since you can separate, you've got that additional $700,000 that we didn't have last week. You may have a little more than that for whippering, but you haven't addressed any of the other requests.
How much is the other request you think going to amount to?
Probably, it depends on what you decide to fund this year, because, you know, we had a lot of capital project requests and everything that we talked about at the budget work session, which we do have a reserve fund, but of four capital expenditures, about $3 million.
Let me ask you this, Mrs. Adams. If we reduced it to $3 per hundred, excuse me, are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, yes.
If that would be just for vehicles, not the other personal property? Right, so now I'm thinking, okay, somebody's got a boat, car, a trailer, whatever. They're going to say, well, how come my boat's taxed higher than my car?
I mean, you can apply it to everything, but that's going to be more of a loss of revenue.
But that boat's not taxed, not valued as high as the car?
Not 100%, no. There's a, she's, Ms. Henderson said, yeah.
How we do boats, we look it up in the NADA, and we did see a few that went up. But the majority of them are not in the book because our book only goes back to, it's just a few years. They don't have an older book for boats like we do cars. So after that point, then it is depreciated down. And then also, if we can't determine a value, then we do a percentage of cost. But there, we are working on that assessment stuff now, and we are seeing a few boats that have gone up. But that's nothing unusual. That happens every year. You can always have something that will go up, but it's not widespread like these vehicles were.
And the county attorney may want to elaborate on this, but there is a sunset clause of 2025 where we can value separately. So for this year, we don't feel like we need to make adjustments next year. You'll have that opportunity to separate that classification until 2025.
Any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
That's plain and simple. If you do a ratio, then the... You do a percentage of this year, and the values just happen to go down next year. You take the ratio away, the assessments are going to go up. If you're doing a tax rate, of course, they're going to see these assessments go up, but the tax amount is going to go down. So there's no answer, truly good answer to this scenario. You just have to pick which way you feel is the best benefit for you all, for us, the taxpayers, all the way around. It's just, it's just a double-edged sword, no way that you look at it. So it's just, it's how you want to tax.
In other words, just what I said meant to go, we need to do what we can for the county.
I think, now, I'm speaking, that's why I'm here, is because of behalf of the citizens. I feel that if you will do something for the citizens, they will appreciate it. But if we do nothing, it's just hard to stomach. I mean, we're looking at one account, you've got three vehicles, and they, every, one of them go up $300, $400, then you're at $1,000 more. I mean, people just cannot afford that right now.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Adams.
There are a couple more comments that I wanted to make, some of it's aligned with Ms. Henderson. The good thing about the rate, next year, values go back, go up by default. It could go up $2 or $3 million just because of new vehicles coming into the county or people... It could go up two or three million dollars just because of new vehicles coming into the county or people trading or, or whatever. So you're gonna compensate next year for some of that rate reduction, just by default. If, if you lower the value, then you gotta, you almost gotta look at a three-year plan. Because next year, if you all of a sudden decide to go up to a hundred percent, they're gonna think that you raised their taxes when literally you didn't raise their taxes. You just made adjustment on the value. And this board has done a really good job of trying to keep the taxes down for the citizens. You lowered the real estate rate by two cent, and that was about three years ago when we had the assessment to equalize, you know, the real estate rates. And, um, you've removed the concealed weapons permit, or you've reduced it from fifty to fifteen, so the county doesn't get any of that money, but what's required to go to the state, so you've given that benefit to the citizens.
Which is about what, excuse me, about what?
That's gonna be somewhere between seven and ten thousand dollars this year in revenue. And then, um, you've also, tonight, you're gonna vote on those limits for increasing the limits for the elderly, handicapped and, and veterans. So, um, that may be, what, about twenty-five, we think, twenty-five to thirty thousand, depending on, I mean, that's that unknown number too. So you've done a really good job of trying to keep those tax payments down for the citizens. And I think anything that you could do at this point is only gonna exaggerate what you've already done.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
Anything you wanna add?
Well, you know, from, you know, I, I talked to Ms. Adams earlier on today, and I feel that it's gonna be important that we, um, really try to do something, I think, with, um, what, well, I guess what I'm trying to say is not to put ourselves in a position where it looks like it's a tax increase next year when it's being adjusted again. Hello? Hello?
Well, it's, I'm quoting Ms. Adams, that it's, it's a long-term, uh, solution.
Well, short term now, and then next year, you basically base it on what the market's gonna do, that none of us know at this point what's gonna happen.
Do know what's going on today, Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Chairman, um, so this, the ability to separate these vehicles, um, that the Journal Assembly passed on an emergency basis, that's got a sunset provision. So what happens two years from now when that allowance goes away and we can't separate them anymore? Does it go automatically go back to three thirty-five, or we gotta come back and?
I will say in front of you, I put in an announcement where, you know, I think the more we communicate and educate the public, the better position we'll be in. And Charlotte County had put a little red message over top of their tax, tax rates. And, um, it, it basically tells people that for the purpose of what's happened with the market this year, that those taxes have been reduced, but, you know, it's a temporary reduction. And that could, you know, in the future, go back to what the original rate is. So it kind of educates people what you're doing this year, and hopefully you can just build off of it. Because I know, I know what's, what's troubling you is the rule of thumb in Finance one oh one is you never reduce the rate. And now we're talking about reducing the rate, but these are un, unknown times, you know, things are totally different, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. King?
I think that reducing the rate is the most fair way to go, or the best way to, 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 to back it up. And it's gonna be for us to pay correction later with the tax rate in the ratio.
I agree. Please, any other questions, concerns? Is there a motion to drop it, the, uh, tax rate from, on personal property of three thirty-five to three dollars?
May I make a comment before we vote?
Alright.
The Commissioner of Revenue was gonna talk to the county attorney about how you should make your motion. Except she needs to know about that other classification on the truck, the big trucks? Okay, yeah.
So in the code, you have separate classifications that can be lower than the general personal property rate. So if you want those trucks, which is the one-ton, the two-ton, and the road tractors, if you want those to go down as well, which they are included in that two hundred and three million figure, a lot of those went up a lot too. So I think you need to state that you want that rate to come to whatever your motion is. I, we, I think we need to specify that that rate is for both, for the vehicles and those trucks, because it's a separate classification.
Mr. Plaid of the Board, you guys could include the trucks.
What's the essential name, what's the classification name?
It's, um, we have a class code, it's called one T for one tons, two T for two tons, and R T for road tractors.
You're suggesting that we add all three of those classes?
Yes.
One T, two Ts, and?
R T.
R T.
D two.
I'll move that we reduce the tax rate to three dollars. For vehicles and the vehicle that fall under one T and two T and R T.
Motion due to may as a second.
Second.
And second. Any additional questions? We sure it, ma'am.
Well, let, let me, Mr. Chairman, I have just the last minute question.
Don't forget.
We don't have to do a public hearing to reduce our rate, do we? Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hibs? Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Henkel? Mr. Hogan? Also vote aye. Alright.
Make sure he understood the motion. Reverend Jones?
Yeah.
Did you understand the motion?
Yes, I did. I voted aye.
Okay, just clarification. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can enter into a normal board meeting. So we've already approved the setting of the agenda. Next is citizen public comment period.
I was just asking if I signed up. Okay.
I was getting ready to. This time, it's provided by the board to allow citizens the opportunity to address the board on issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. Nobody signed up. Is it anyone here that'd like to address the board who failed to sign up? If not, we're moving on. And we are fortunate to have with us tonight Mr. Robert Brown, F D dot Athletics residency administrator. Mr. Brown, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Nice, nice to be here again. Don't get here much, but, uh, good to be here tonight. I think you all have a draft of a resolution approving Route seven twenty-one, Stone Ridge Road, I think it's Stone Ridge Road, to be, uh, hard-surfaced in accordance with VDOT rural rustic standards. We have had a private entity, uh, express a desire to hard-surface this road. VDOT, uh, we will approve that request and issue them, and issue them a land use permit for the hard-surfacing part that they are gonna perform under permit. And the reason I need, we, the county needs, I need board approval to, to, to hard-surface this road because it, we, we're gonna, we're gonna construct it to rural rustic design standards. It's very clear in the, in our regulations that the county board supervisors must approve hard-surfacing road under these standards, even though it's not going to involve a secondary road project. We still have to have a resolution from the board approving. And this road does meet the intent of the rural rustic regulations and guidelines to be. So that is, that is why I'm here tonight. It, uh, that's why I'm here tonight.
Let me ask, uh, Mr. Hibs, that is your area. No problem. Any questions from any board members?
This already a state road is just not, it's just.
Yes, this is an existing, state maintained, uh, unpaid road. It's an unpaid road, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but he's paying for this, is that right?
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we, um, accept the resolution as included in the board.
Motion due to may as a second. Additional questions or concerns? Here it done. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Carter, and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Hogan shared, shared some concerns with me. Does any, any other board members have any, any concerns they'd like me to look into while I'm here? I'd ask him, I'd ask him, but I'm gonna ask. I'm gonna ask. Any, 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 any highway matters?
Mr. Henkel?
Since he opened, you can't. There's a lot of roads in my area, especially ones that have inlay, the area of containment ends, the overstarts, there seems to be a trench that keeps, water keeps digging trenches, and you come by, you fill it in, like maybe once every six months, with crush and run or sand or something, just like, you know, when it rains, it starts to rain out again. How often you go down the, down the roads and fill those?
Well, typically, if it's a repeating situation, then we're not, we're not, we're patching a hole, filling a hole up, but it's a greater problem there with the high shoulder. Uh, if you have some specific routes where this is reoccurring, I would appreciate you sending me those locations and we'll do a permanent fix. Yes, sir.
Very good. You have a good evening, Nancy.
Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. And we have Mr. David Rowe at Bankers Insurance. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Carter. Alright, we, we're gonna have a present, we're gonna pull my PowerPoint up. Always bring a hard copy. You go, you go help him, Mrs. Adams.
Apparently, we got a timeout right now.
Okay. I am happy just to speak, or do we think we can move the presentation?
Yeah, I think all of us has got, has got to go.
You've got it? Can we just to talk?
That's fine.
How about if I talk?
That suits you.
Suits me fine. Chairman Carter, members of the board, Mrs. Adams, thank you all for having me tonight. My name is David Rowe. I help Susan, Tippy, the admin team with the employee benefits program. And I wanted to share with you all some news about our renewal. Give you a little bit of history about kind of how we got to this point with our health insurance program. If you all remember, and I don't know how many of you all were here, in two thousand and seventeen, we used to buy our benefits jointly with our school division. We were in a program with Piedmont Healthcare out of Lynchburg, and we, I think you all had been fighting some tough increases. And we went out to the market and came back with the Commonwealth of Virginia's program called the Local Choice. We made the decision to move to that program for a lot of reasons that I'm gonna cover this evening, and also offered for our school division to continue to purchase these benefits with us. And the leadership at that time at the school board office decided not to do that. So we did separate from our school division in October of two thousand and seventeen. We joined the Local Choice program again. This is the buying power of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I wanna, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in a minute. We ran a short plan year. We were on the October cycle, the October renewal cycle because of the school division. We ran a short plan year from October of two thousand and seventeen. Who's, who's driving this thing over there? Yeah, keep going. There you go. Perfect. Thank you. So we did run a short plan year for my, this helps me not have to put my glasses on. We ran a short plan year from October two thousand and seventeen to June of two thousand and eighteen to line up with our fiscal year. I will tell you that we were able to add better benefits by going with the Commonwealth of Virginia. I think the plan that we funded, uh, Mrs. Adams, you'll remember, uh, used to have a fifteen hundred dollar individual deductible. The plan that we sponsor now has just a thousand dollar deductible. And then in, uh, July of two thousand and eighteen, we did renew as a standalone group in this program. Next. There we go. Quick, quick history, we good? Okay, good. Quick history of the renewal action that we've seen since we joined this program. July of two thousand and eighteen, we did experience a five point two percent increase. And let me stop for a minute just to make sure everyone understands. In this program, um, we have less than a hundred employees on our plan, ninety-two to be exact. And with the state's program, um, managed by Anthem, groups under a hundred do not, we don't even look at your experience. We look at how the whole pool does that you're a part of. So again, the specific experience here in Appomattox does not drive our rate action every year. It's based on how the pool performs. So our first renewal in the program by ourselves, we experienced a five point two percent increase. Uh, July of two thousand and nineteen, we had no increase. We had a flat renewal. Uh, July of two thousand and twenty, a four point three percent increase. And then last year, we did experience a one percent decrease. Next slide. Looking at this, and then this year for our July one, two thousand and twenty-two renewal, FY twenty-three budget year, we are experiencing a higher increase than we've seen before at eight point seven percent. I believe Mrs. Adams had the number up as I was walking in earlier. That's about a fifty thou, fifty-seven thousand dollar increase to the county to fund the program the way we've been funding the program. Uh, but I did want to point out, over the five years that we've been in this program, our renewal average has been about three point four four percent. If you all know anyone who has to buy health insurance on their own, small business, not fortunate enough to be a part of the state's buying power, these are very not, no increase is ever welcome, but these are fairly nominally. but these are fairly nominal increases. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear about that. Okay, so I wanted to make sure that everyone understood, understands why we are with the state's program. Commonwealth of Virginia is the largest buyer of health insurance in the state. So when you think about it, the gentleman who was here before, he's covered through Anthem under the state, okay? Commonwealth buys employee benefits for about 140,000 people. Does anyone remember how many I said were on our plan? 92. So if we go out on our own, we're buying benefits for 92 people instead of taking advantage of the 140,000 that the state buys for. Commonwealth account is by far Anthem's largest group in the state. It's Delta Dental's largest state. And because of that, with us being able to piggyback off that buying power, our fixed cost, our administrative cost, our reinsurance cost, trend factors, no state premium tax in any of this, which saves us 2.25% if we were a fully insured group, and no ACA insurer fees. So again, a lot of value there by buying through the, through the state. We pool both our pharmacy and our dental costs as well. So we don't, you know, when, when this, when your all's renewal is being reviewed, we're not looking at your pharmacy spend or your dental spend either. And because of these factors, we experience lower than average renewal increases year after year. Questions on any of that? So in summary, even though our renewal this year is higher than we've seen before, it is still below market averages. Couple of things. Our employees are happy. They are happy. We are providing them with this Anthem PPO program that we're a part of, the largest network of doctors and hospitals, not just in Virginia, but nationwide. If our folks want to go to Duke, Johns Hopkins, Mayo Clinic, MD Anderson, they just go. They don't have to get anyone's permission. So again, the best value that I can bring to the citizens, this board, and our employees here in Appomattox. And unfortunately, Chairman Carter, I do need a vote tonight. We do have to tell the state by Friday. We're either staying with them or we're leaving. They've had some administrative changes, and we normally have more leeway than this, but unfortunately, this year, I do need to know something so I can let them know by Friday. Okay?
All right. And saying that, are you finished with your?
Yes, sir, I am.
And saying that, any questions, concerns? Hearing done. What's the board's pledge? In regards to our insurance? Okay, Mrs. Adams.
I just wanted to notate one thing. I did reach out to the school system to see what their increase is. Last year's theirs was 1.6, whereas was minus 1.
Correct.
And then this year, they're looking at 10% increase.
Susan, I, I actually got word that it was 10 and a half.
Okay, well, I got this from Dr. Bennett.
Yes, yeah, so. We, we've performed better year after year than the school division. Candidly, they should have joined us.
Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. You know, he says that our employees are happy. So is Miss Adams and Wanda and Kayla and Mr. Warwick, are they all happy with the insurance?
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Adams.
Well, I'll say I'm fortunate enough not to have to use the insurance very much, but when I do, I'm very happy with that.
Very good.
Mr. Jones, you have any questions for Mr. Rowe?
Uh, no, but it seems like the insurance plan is working well for Appomattox employees.
Thank you, sir. We have entertained a motion.
Ms. Chairman, I move we stay with the the Local Choice Health Insurance.
Motion due later, is that second? Discussion or concerns? Hearing done. We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. And once again, good to see you again.
Good, good to see you and all of you, Mr. Carter.
Okay, next is a courthouse facility assessment proposal. John Spencer? Yeah, there you are.
Good evening. You should have in front of you a letter from Architectural Partners. It is my understanding that this board has asked staff to solicit a proposal for kind of assessing the state of the old courthouse, looking at space study, potentially for some different uses here in the future. So what we have done, after some consultation with Mr. Latchney, we have contacted Architectural Partners. And just kind of as a reminder, Architectural Partners is a successor company to Craddock Cunningham, which is the company which designed the now nearly 20-year-old new courthouse. And yes, we're all getting old quick. But the, the lead architect on that courthouse is Gary Harvey. He is one of the two principals of this company. Of course, we've had a long relationship with, with Mr. Harvey, with his company, with Craddock Cunningham. And they, not only did they design the new courthouse, but as a part of all of that, if you if you remember, especially Mr. Carter, I'm sure you do, the, how it was going to be at one time a renovation and addition project. And then it was sort of changed into a new construction project. But they also came back with a conceptual link between the two buildings. So they have all of that work. They have the assessment of the old building from 20 years ago. They have the conceptual drawings of the link. And so they also, just within the last year, year and a half, helped us with the insulation project in the new courthouse. And, and that has been a success, if you talk to the folks in the courthouse. So what they're, what Mr. Harvey and his company are proposing to do is, is laid out here. You know, of course, gathered data, using a lot of the CAD drawings from their own archives. They're going to interview us, the different people with the county to basically get ideas on utilization, potential utilization of the building. And, you know, they're gonna prepare a space needs plan. And it's gonna really address the structure of the building. They're going to look at life safe, life safety issues. They're gonna look at the building code requirements and how well all of that really comes into play right now. How much upgrade would need to be done to bring it into code. And they're also gonna look at the, the new courthouse, particularly in the lobby area, how you would have to control the flow of traffic in the lobby area, particularly after hours. And if you have a meeting in the old courthouse coming in through the ADA accessible new courthouse, which already has an elevator with those two-sided doors, so that, that, that was already put in place, that would potentially serve to link in the old courthouse. So there needs to be some consideration to movement flowing through the, through the new courthouse. They're also then going to develop some preliminary schematic plans. And, you know, you can read all the details here about exactly which, you know, each step entails. But their fixed lump sum fee that they're proposing for all of this is $15,860. And that includes their reimbursables like meals and travel, does not include any printing. So if we want different things printed, handouts, whatever, whatever, that would, that would be at cost. So that would be separate. And they also have some additional services. If we would be interested, we can talk about that at some point. So what we're, you know, what we're asking you to consider is if you're interested in, you know, moving forward, assessing this building, looking at the potential for reusing this facility here in the not-too-distant future, that you consider the contract proposal here by Architectural Partners for that sum of $15,860.
I mean, it's a good thing, Mr. Spencer, that you contacted these folks because of the drawings. And there's no, I ran it to be $20,000 or more.
Yeah, it probably would be. And I will add one other thing too that I failed to mention. Just this past week, we put out an RFP for space utilization study, basically assessment. It's the same type of thing, assessing the other county buildings as well as the, then the space utilization. And a part of that was they would work with whatever, you know, if you contracted here with Architectural Partners, the other company would work with them. And kind of on the courthouse, just making sure that the, whatever spaces in the courthouse is still taken into account with the overall space utilization plan. If that makes sense.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the board, for the board to Mr. Spencer regards to the facility assessment?
Mr. Chairman, just to make sure, this, this is a structural analysis too, right?
Yes, sir.
Not just space analysis.
It's structural. It, it's going into everything except for the roof because the roof was recently replaced. Well, five years or so ago. But it is going into all of the electrical plumbing, HVAC, you know, interior, you know, everything, walls, painting, everything that would be needed.
Any other questions, concerns? Well, we are ready to vote then, now, Mr. Spencer. Is our motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move, I'll move that we proceed with the contract to have the old courthouse space evaluated and accept this assessment proposal.
Motion due later, is that second?
Second.
Another discussion. Mr. Jones, you have anything you'd like to ask?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. We almost on schedule. Okay, we're gonna enter to a public hearing. First, there's amendment to Chapter 3.7-12, exemptions for elderly and disabled persons. As duly advertised, public hearing has been scheduled for today's date at 7:00 PM. The Appomattox County Board of Supervisors will consider and receive comments on a proposed amendment to the Appomattox County Code, Chapter 3, Administrative Article 7, Taxation and Fees, Division 5, Exemption for Elder and Disabled Persons. Specifically, the proposed amendment is 3.7-12. Exemption on certain real estate subsection A1 related to the total combining income would increase from $20,000 to $35,000. Anyone sign up? Is it anyone here that'd like to speak in favor of this? Who failed to sign up to speak? Hearing done. Anyone opposed to this? Okay, hearing done. Now hereby close this public hearing. And we can vote on this now. Is there a motion on the floor to change or amend Chapter 3.7-12?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we amend the Chapter 3.7-12 to show that the defined total income would increase from $20,000 to $35,000.
Motion due later, is that second? Comments, concerns? Mr. Jones, you have any?
No, sir. Thank you.
Then we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Okay, next.
Sammy, can I ask a question?
Go ahead. Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, is this gonna be effective for January 1st of 2022?
Is it January that you like?
No, it would be January. So do you want to amend the motion?
Do we have to?
Include effective January 1.
Okay, would you like to amend your motion, Mr. Hinkle?
Mr. Chairman, I amend my motion to make this effective January 1, 2022.
Oh, Mr. Hicks, excuse me. Did you hear all that, Mr. Jones?
Yes, I did.
Okay, very well. Okay. We'll go back and do another roll call vote. Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
Also vote aye. All right, our next public hearing is employee bonus. As duly advertised, public hearing has been scheduled for this date regarding employee bonuses pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-1508. The Appomattox County Board of Supervisors will consider and receive comments on a proposed ordinance regarding $1,000 employee bonuses to include all county employees in the IRS definition. And we have two people to have signed up. Mr. Fleet.
Sir, Chairman.
Welcome, sir. Come on up.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, may Ms. Hicks come up with me since we're in tandem and touch forth our office.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. It's good to be here. It's good to see you all. Like last month, do I give my name and address?
Oh, yeah.
My name is Les Fleet. I live at 383 Sunset Ridge Drive in Concord, which is Appomattox County. Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Madam County Administrator, thank you for allowing me this time to speak. Last month, this board approved bonus money for all county employees and employees of constitutional officers that have signed MOUs with the county to acknowledge their dedicated work during these trying times and to help offset the exploding inflation and high cost of living that is currently engulfing all of us. The Clerk of the Circuit Court and I commend the board for this action and am coming to you this evening to stress that the board vote to also include the equally dedicated employees of our two offices, even though we have not signed the same MOU with the county. This is the 17th year I have been a prosecutor here in Appomattox County. The last three as the Commonwealth's Attorney, and in all that time, this is the first time that the county has made this distinction when implementing pay raises and/or bonuses. Ms. Hicks and I, along with our employees, are attempting to understand the rationale and excluding them as they are equally dedicated, hardworking, and suffered from COVID diagnoses and quarantines. Is the cost of living and inflation somehow less for the employees of these two offices? Both of our offices assist county employees when questions arise. In fact, the Commonwealth's Office just spent time preparing and constructing a PowerPoint on affidavits for search warrants, obtaining and executing search warrants, and how to file those search warrants in the proper clerk's offices, and then provided an in-service training on, on that PowerPoint with the county's animal control officers so that they did not violate citizens' constitutional rights. The Commonwealth's Attorney's Office also assisted, also assists in prosecuting many county statutes brought by the Sheriff's Office and county employees, which brings in money to, to the county in the, in the form of fines. Last month, Supervisor Jones asked the county attorney if constitutional officers, employees were county employees. And he was told by the county attorney, and again, I'm paraphrasing, this is not a quote. this is not a quote, that according to the IRS, we might be considered county employees because we fall under the county's tax identification number, but that we are a Virginia constitutional creation, therefore, we're not considered state employees either. I would submit that we are more county employees than not. Our offices close or delay our opening during inclement weather when the county does. The employees' insurance benefits are either paid for or supplemented by the county. And on March eighth of this year, the Virginia Court of Appeals stated in an opinion of a DUI conviction under a local jurisdiction's code that was appealed to the, to that Court of Appeals, that the appellee to the appeal was the local jurisdiction and not the Commonwealth of Virginia. The justices ruled that, quote, "Many Commonwealth's Attorneys prosecute violations of local ordinances on behalf of the locality. When they do so, the trial court and counsel for both parties frequently fail to note an important distinction. The term Commonwealth's Attorney is simply a commonly used shorthand term for the office formally designated by Article seven, Section four of the Constitution of the Commonwealth, as the Attorney for the Commonwealth. When a person holding that office or one of their assistants prosecutes a violation of a local ordinance, they are not acting as the Attorney for the Commonwealth when they do so. Rather, the prosecutor is the Attorney for the locality. In this case, this case that was appealed, that locality was Henrico County," end quote. The case name is Paul H. Lunmark versus Commonwealth of Virginia, record number zero six seven seven dash twenty-one dash two. I would submit that we are more county employees than state employees. Again, why are our employees treated differently? Because Ms. Hicks and I have determined our vacation and sick leave policies are more beneficial than what the county offers and fall squarely within the authority granted us by Section fifteen point two dash sixteen oh five of the Code of Virginia. We have been told by some on the board that we are in violation of that Code section. I'm standing before you tonight and categorically tell you that that is incorrect. We are not in violation. The Code states that the employee shall be given at least two weeks' vacation with pay and at least seven days' sick leave with pay both per annum. That is the minimum, not the maximum. The county combines the vacation and sick leave together and grants eighteen days total per year during the first five years of employment and increases that total to twenty-four days annually for year six through fifteen of employment. The clerk's office and Commonwealth's Attorney's Office both separate the vacation time and sick leave earned. As Ms. Hicks pointed out last month, the clerk's office employees earn one day per month for vacation and one day per month for sick leave totaling twelve days for each every year. The Commonwealth's Attorney employees earn a flat three weeks' vacation per year and ten sick days during that same timeframe for the first nine years of employment. At years ten and beyond, employees earn four weeks' vacation and twenty days sick per year. Both plans are better than what the county offers. Ms. Hicks and I both interpret Code Section fifteen point two dash sixteen oh five as granting constitutional officers the authority to provide greater benefits. I contacted Robin Di Socio, Executive Secretary of the Commonwealth's Compensation Board on March third of this year, and she verified that our interpretation was indeed correct. We do have the authority to grant reasonable greater benefits. She also stated that this was only to the extent that those benefits are actually used. In other words, any benefits accumulated by employees that are not used at the time the employee separates from their employment cannot be approved for a payout unless first approved by the county, since the Compensation Board does not reimburse those funds. It is clearly understood by our employees, Ms. Hicks is in mind, before they accept an offer of employment, our respective offices do not offer a payout for unused accumulated vacation. Sick leave must be used in an earned year, it does not carry forward. They must use it before termination. In other words, let's say they have thirty unused vacation days when they get their notice of leaving employment. Then they are allowed to use the thirty days, their last thirty days of employment. So let's say their last day is effective August first of two thousand and twenty-two, and they've got thirty days. Then their last day of working in the office would be July one of two thousand and twenty-two. Thereby, that whole week of July, they would, they would use their, that whole month of July, they would use the thirty days of employment. Why do we have greater benefits? It is to keep our valuable employees. Ms. Hicks and I both greatly appreciate the supplements the board graciously extends to our employees that are added to the base Compensation Board salaries in an attempt to make us comparable to what similar employees make in surrounding jurisdictions, but we are still behind what is paid. Assistant Commonwealth's Attorneys in those jurisdictions make anywhere between, make approximately five thousand dollars more than our assistant Commonwealth's Attorneys. And the, and the deputy Commonwealth's Attorney here in Appomattox makes approximately fifteen to twenty thousand dollars less than in surrounding jurisdictions. Let me give you an example. I think a lot of you on the board may have remembered when we had an assistant, a full-time assistant here in the county, probably three years ago, three or four years ago, Clint Carwell. He left to go to Amherst because they paid more. Clint, who has about as much time as our two current assistant Commonwealth's Attorneys, makes twenty thousand dollars more than what they do. I believe that our Commonwealth's Attorney's Office is second to none, and in an attempt to keep these talented prosecutors and office manager, I offer a better benefit package rather than come back to the board asking for more money to enhance their paycheck and keep them there. They routinely put in forty-plus hours of work per week, many times eat their lunch at their desk, and are on call after hours, twenty-four seven. We do not object to or complain about the phone calls from county employees and law enforcement. That's one of the aspects of our jobs, and we prefer to answer questions before charges or actions take place. It is merely to point out that the work of a Commonwealth's Attorney and employees extend out beyond a normal forty-hour work week. The clerk's office also works beyond the eight-hour workday, and I'm constantly in receipt of emails from Ms. Hicks or her employees to either myself or members of my office after five P. M. relating to court business. Even though the courthouse is only open between the hours of eight-thirty A. M. and four-thirty P. M. Monday through Friday by Circuit Court order, our respective staffs work before and after those hours. I know my speaking time is limited, so I just highlighted some of the reasons as to why Ms. Hicks and I decided not to sign the MOU extended by the county. In our minds, we are enriching the benefits received by our respective employees without costing the county and its taxpayers money. Appomattox is a wonderful place to live and put down roots, and we are mindful of the fiscal impact our offices have on the county, which is why we normally submit the bearish bonus budget request each year. However, we would be remiss not to fight for our employees, to let them know that we value them and the outstanding work they perform for the citizenry of Appomattox. While Ms. Hicks and I fully understand the county has the authority to determine who receives bonuses and who doesn't, we submit to you that it is not right to preclude certain persons of constitutional officers' offices just because those constitutional officers won't sign an MOU. To enhance the morale of all employees who assist the county meet the needs of the citizens, we urge the vote, the board, to vote yes for approving the bonus money to the employees of the Circuit Court Clerk's Office and the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. Thank you.
Thank you. Let Ms. Hicks, you go speak now.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. I would just like to say, Janet Hicks, six three, six three three four, Hollywood Road, Appomattox. I would just like to say I concur with what Mr. Fleet has spoken and presented to you this evening, and I likewise hope that you all consider sharing the thousand dollar bonus with my employees also. Thank you.
Any questions, concerns? I need interpretation. Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Under section, under the Code, Section fifteen dash, fifteen point two dash sixteen oh three, constitutional officer, I'm reading, quoting. Constitutional officers must negotiate with the county or city on whether vacation or sick leave for staff may be accumulated from year to year or terminate within a given time period. Vacation time may not accumulate in excess of six weeks. Now, are you all complying with that?
Uh, we are, we are not carrying over more than six weeks of vacation per year. My interpretation of the statute is entering into that agreement as if we want to offer a payback for our county employees if they have accumulated time at the end of their employment with the county. As far as, you know, according to Ms. Di Socio, we do have the right to offer those, an enhanced benefit package, if you will, for leave and for vacation and the sick, but we cannot hold the county liable for those extra days over what the county pays for county employees without the county's prior approval.
Mr. Lass, have you heard it?
I don't know if you spoke to the state, but fifteen point sixteen, I said, I'll probably read it. Employee is used in the section, these employees or deputies, each attorney, the Commonwealth, the commissioner, the regular courtside courts. Definition of employee is fifteen point two sixteen five, is employees of the constitutional officers. Paragraph B says, "Every county for which such employees work shall annually provide each employee at least two weeks of vacation paid, as said in the article that says the county provides." There's nothing in here that says the constitutional officer provides, the present authorities provide. It was clear that the county, it's the same language used that says the county shall provide health insurance. It's the exact same language that you state also, the county shall provide health insurance, it says the county shall provide at least two weeks of vacation and seven days a week. That's what you should be reading. So I don't think the interpretation is accurate, that the constitutional officer has the ability to really enhance any of the conditions, and basically the employees, what they feel appropriate, the actual state law. It actually said that, I don't know if they said that.
Well, I'd like to move to Socio, she's Executive Secretary. I'm telling you who I spoke with at the state, and she said that as constitutional officers do have the authority to grant a reasonable greater benefit package. And if it is, the way that, and the way she described this statute is that that's if the employees are to receive a payout if they have accumulated leave at the end of, at the termination of their employment with the local jurisdiction.
That's it.
If it was just like you said, then why does it say when a county or city has entered into an agreement? In other words, it's saying you don't have to enter into an agreement when, because if it says when you enter into an agreement, it could also mean if you don't enter into an agreement. So I don't think that that statute requires constitutional officers to enter into an MOU agreement with the local jurisdiction. They can, if they so choose, but if they want to give an enhanced, reasonable benefit greater than what the county or the local jurisdiction offers, they do have the authority. This just lays out the bare minimum to what a local jurisdiction can give constitutional officer employees.
So, paragraph B, everybody can read it for themselves, fifteen point two sixteen five, paragraph B says, "Every county," or city, but I left that out, "every county for which such employees work, the employees of the constitutional officer shall annually provide for such an employee at least two weeks' vacations, as the county will provide it." It then goes on in a totally separate paragraph to say, "The county or city may provide vacation sick leave may be accumulated or shall terminate," separate paragraph, not in that paragraph. And then the final paragraph says-
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hogan.
Um, is the purpose of the public hearing for us to debate what the law says and what it means, or are we going to hear from the people that signed up to speak?
Their counsel.
Huh? I'm just answering the question. I'll stop. I think Mr. Fleet, Ms. Hicks, would just, just quote, and that was it, but, and you do raise a good point. This is a public hearing. So, as this is a public hearing, I think it's been said, and what's next for us to do, we will vote. Acknowledging, acknowledging, Mr. Fleet and Ms. Hicks, looking out for their employees. We are not here to, to not recognize them, we are here to vote in regards to what's stated. And I understand, I think the whole board understands that we, and that's all, that's all we can say. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anyone else to speak? Okay. None other, none other body wants to speak in regards to this, this question on this public hearing? So, Colin, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, before you make a motion and vote, I need to provide clarification. We have to print the motion in the manner in which it's stated. So the advertisement said, "All county employees that fall under the IRS definition." So in your motion, you will need to state which employees should get that bonus, and we didn't realize it would create an issue until we had other employees excited because they thought they were getting another bonus. So in your motion, be sure to state if, who you would like to receive that, which departments.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hicks.
I made the motion, and for convenience sake, I use the county attorney's statement that social services in the elected offices, if you will, would be under the IRS definition.
And employees.
Right. The spirit of the motion was not to, what is the idea, that we're going to double bonus?
Right.
Now, the spirit of the motion that I made was to extend the bonus to all county employees. I use the IRS definition because that was the most convenient way to communicate that it would include social services, Lass's office, Janet's office, and whoever else fits that definition. Is that?
Well, in conjunction of that, we realized that social services does fall under different IRS ID number. So you would have to state that you would want those employees to receive it also.
Right. Again, the spirit of my motion was to try and treat people equally with a bonus, to communicate a thank you. Regardless of whether people sign an MOU or not, that that was the, the, that was what was behind my motion. So, so I need to specifically state that this for, social services, it's for-
For court and Commonwealth attorney.
Right.
Employees.
Any others?
That's it.
Okay. I will make that motion, that it's, that's for sure. Well, I already said it.
Motion duly made, is that second?
Second.
Any more questions or concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Um, I think it's unfortunate that this attempt to do something good for people has apparently ruffled some feathers and devolved into a debate over the merits of the MOU in, it should have been settled several years ago. The bottom line for me is, are we being fair? And- And, you know, the constitutional officers have the right-
Yeah.
-to decide whether they want to sign an MOU or not. And I'm not here to try to convince any of them that they should or they shouldn't. That's up to them. But they understand when they don't, that if we choose to give our employees a raise and the state does not, that they won't get that raise. That's, that's everybody's understanding. That if the state gives them a raise and we don't give our employees a raise, then our folks won't get a raise. But they will. So they have chosen to stay on the state program, not use our benefits, not use our perks, not follow our rules. If that's their prerogative, that's fine. But when, you know, Mr. Fleet said tonight that they have, you know, better benefits through the state, and that's their choice to be with them, that's great. If that's what he feels is best for his employees, I fully support him. But I don't think it's fair to come back and say, oh, wait, this time y'all are doing something better, I want that too. I don't think it's, you know, you can't have your cake and eat it too. And I think we have, we have five constitutional officers in this camp, they all have employees. If we, the whole purpose of the MOU to begin with was so that everybody's on the same playing field. Everybody follows the same rules, they get the same benefits, they get the same raises when everybody else gets them. This is a bonus in lieu of a raise, was how it was presented. If we approve this, I fear that we're going to go back to a point where the other constitutional officers are going to say, well, what's the point? What's the point in me being a part of this MOU? If all you got to do is come to the board and ask, and we're going to give it to you anyway. I think if we run the risk of going back to having five different employee policies, six really, the five constitutional officers plus ours, seven if you count social services, so you're going to have seven different policies, seven different sets of rules, seven different opinions, seven different work hours, seven different who gets what time and who gets how much vacation time. We don't need to get back, we don't need to go there. The purpose of the MOU, which the comp board encourages, is so that everybody's on the same playing field. And I just feel like this is a step backwards. I feel like if we do this, nobody is saying that the employees, clerk's office, or the Commonwealth Attorney's Office aren't great employees. They do valuable work. We appreciate them. To me, the bigger issue is, is it good policy to have seven different personnel policies in the county? And I don't think so. And then I think if we've chosen to not follow the county policy, then they should understand that they won't get those benefits. Pretty simple. If you want to play by our rules, you get our perks. If you don't want to play by our rules, you don't get our perks. I don't know how much simpler it could be. So for that reason, I'm going to vote no. And again, I think that both offices do great work. I value their employees. We did give them all a bonus for the COVID relief when we gave it to everybody, because we do recognize their work. But this, to me, is a separate issue about how are we going to treat, you know, our employees and their employees? If we give it to them, to me, we're telling our employees that we're going to give somebody else the same benefits we give you, but we're going to make you follow a different set of rules. And I just don't think that's fair for our employees.
Any other comments?
All right, well, excuse me. Just as a follow-up to that, I respect the comments. Well, I'll just say that a raise and a bonus, in my view, in this particular instance, are not the same thing. And that is where, that is the angle that I'm coming from. I understand that you believe that it's, and it may have been stated that way, I'm not saying that it wasn't. But I don't think, in this instance, I think that we're following the trend that we set last year, possibly before that, I don't know. I haven't voted on bonuses in the past. But I know last year that regardless of where the money came from, we gave a bonus to everybody. And I think that that is the fair thing to do in the situation of extending a bonus, because I think a bonus is a thank you. Again, a raise across the board is not the same thing to me.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Mr. Jones, you have any?
Aye, no.
No. We have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks.
All right.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
No.
And I vote no. So three to two, so raises or bonus, actually, will go toward the Commonwealth Attorney and Ms. Hicks, Circuit Court, Clerk of the Code, Circuit Court.
And Social Services.
And Social Services. Okay.
Do they need to appropriate those funds? That's what we did last time. That's-
Do we need a dollar?
Well, I've got the-
Appropriate sufficient amount.
Okay. I move that we appropriate the sufficient amount to cover the bonuses.
Okay. Motion made, is that second? We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks.
Aye.
Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
No.
And I vote no. Okay. Moving on. School appropriation requests, we have the full officer request from the school for extended funds in the amount of $286,408.84. Mr. Gillespie has confirmed these expenditures were not part of the HVAC project. The school board agreed to utilize $3 million of CARES funds for eligible construction causes and determined that the HVAC project will absorb most of these expenses. So staff recommendation is to approve the reimbursements to the school in the amount of $286,408.84. Consent, transfer by consent to the SNAP School Construction Fund to supplement to 8103-8303, School Renovation Project. Any discussion on this item? Is that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reimburse the schools in the amount of $286,408.84 to supplement the renovation project as requested.
Motion duly made, is that second? Questions or concerns? We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Next, a school appropriation request. Attached with the board's review and approval is an appropriation request for the school's federal and state grants in the amount of $862,894.62. And my, and no local funds are required for this. Is that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the appropriation request from the school for $862,894.62 be approved.
Thank you. Is that second? Second. Discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Committee appointments. Courthouse Park Board of Directors. The Courteness Festival Park Board of Directors has submitted a recommendation to the board to appoint Mrs. Keel Scott to the Courteness Festival Board of Directors. I'd like to say, I am, as you know, on that board, representing you all, and I'd like to say that Mrs. Scott is a valuable member of this community. She's engaged in a lot of community activities, and I think she will be a real asset to this So upon saying that, I'll make a motion that we appoint her to the Courteness Board of Directors, Courteness Park. Any discussion? We'll have, we'll normally do a vote. Motion has been duly made, is that second? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Ms. Scott, would you mind standing so everybody knows who you are? Thank you, and thank you for participating in this. You are really going to be an asset. Next, gentlemen, is our consent agenda, which includes approval of all bills, minutes, supplemental appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item on the consent agenda shall be removed from the consent agenda or at the request of any board member prior to the vote on the consent agenda. Items covered or removed from the consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in order in which they were removed from the consent agenda immediately following consideration of the consent agenda. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to read, which was a monument, reading material here with all the minutes and all. Anybody have any questions, any concerns? Is that motion then, to approve the consent agenda as is?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as is.
Is that second? Discussion?
I would just like to comment, Mr. Chairman-
Yes, ma'am.
-that Mr. Hogan had identified a couple of typos in the minutes, so we have corrected that in the official version. And although we didn't distribute a new copy, they have those corrections.
You mean y'all had typos? Really?
Well, we had a motion, there were a couple motions that were-
We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Hinkle.
Aye.
Mr. Hogan.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay. Mr. Latchford. Thank you, sir. Ms. Adams.
No report. I've passed out a copy of my report, and I don't think that I'll delay everything by reading you, but it's, it's the departments and the activities that occurred during the month of February. The only thing you need to notate is you received the email to the invite to the molesting conference call, and that will be at Tuesday, April 5th, here in the boardroom at 5:00 p.m. prior to your budget work session.
All right. Any questions for this? For our county attorney, or our county administrator? Hearing none, we move right on. You have four, you want two, three, four, four items, informational items, which consist of DOD annual hearing for the six-year plan, MS County Chamber of Commerce, and I hope everyone's had the opportunity to read that letter. The school financial report, and Robbie Lee sold in Water Conservation District Board of Directors meeting. Next, as supervisor's concerns, Mr. Hicks. Mr. Jones.
No, sir.
Mr. Hinkle.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just make comment about the Chamber of Commerce letter. I've been, you know, reading Mr. Redding's articles in the paper, and I've noticed that, you know, several times he's talked about the fact that we should have one government, and I've, I've got mixed feelings on that, so I'm going to be interested to see what this, what happens with this. I think it could be some benefits, but on the other hand, I don't know if we're ready. Other than that, I have no concerns.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Hogan. I only have one, and I'd like to apologize to Jeff Garrett, who erroneously said that he was in the running for town manager. So I had some erroneous information, I expelled it to you all, so I apologize to you all and to Mr. Garrett for making that statement. Upon that, our next, no, closed session.
Yeah, we have a brief closed session.
Brief closed session, all right. Mr. Hinkelman.
Yeah, that's what, that's-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Appomattox County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees and employees of the public body, and specifically the sheriff's office, in consultation with legal counsel, bring to actual or probable litigation, which since consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body concerning the Regent 2000 suit. And whereas pursuant to Sections 2.237, 11A1 and A7 of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Appomattox County does hereby authorize discussions before stated matters in closed meeting. Need that as a motion?
Is that motion?
So what Mr. Latchford said.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, our treasurer.